All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
May we compose our hearts and our minds. To Heavenly Father, we thank you that you have allowed us thus far this day an opportunity to come to transact business for the city of Gaston. We pray for every council member here, we pray for the mayor, and we pray for all the city officials. We pray that whatever we do for our city, it will be done that you, as our Father, will get the glory and the honor. We pray for every citizen that's represented here. And we just thank you and we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. Amen. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee
meeting, the work session, and city council meeting held on May 3rd.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 29th through May 5th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations?
Mr. Charles Abney, will you come forth? Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental illnesses and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, Sherman Gaetan, as Mayor of the city of Gaston, does hereby proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Month, before stage four. We also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Gaston to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness at all stages, and especially before they reach stage four. Mr. Abney?
Thank you. If you have anything you'd like to say.
I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for designating May 2016 as Mental Health Awareness Month. I appreciate your time and interest in this subject, and we hope to call on you in the near future to talk about other issues. Thank you very much.
All right, under unfinished business, item number 8A is an ordinance amending city code section 74-91 to add license classification number 4550. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It adds a special event license to the schedule for barbarian challenge vendors. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I think that section 74-91... That section, I think you said it was 74-50, it's 74-91 on mine?
Yeah, that's what, 74-91.
I'll just bring that to your attention.
Okay. Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B, no council action will be necessary on the resolution for 606 Frederick Street in District 1. The owner has taken action to abate the nuisance. The owner actually has abated the nuisance. Item number 8C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1133 Litchfield Avenue on District 2, Blalock Rental Properties LLC and HSBC Mortgage Corporation being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 5th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion for another 30 days on that, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? That was based on the recommendation of the Building Department. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item number 8D is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 919 Holly Street in District 5, Billy Terrence Warren and Virginia D. Warren and Regions Mortgage SBM First Commercial Mortgage Company being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 5th. What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, we'll give another 30 days, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution an additional 30 days, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
No council action will be necessary on the resolution for 2310 Clayton Avenue in District 7. The owners have abated the nuisance there as well. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 201 Brown Street in District 1, Jessica Lee Boswell Hope, Lawrence Hodge, and their heirs, and Willadine Woody being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I'm Miss Woody. And I got the letter yesterday.
You see?
Can you hear me?
Okay.
You need to come up to the microphone.
She's on a scooter. She can't come up there.
She's on a scooter.
Can we make an accommodation?
I will. I'll help her. She'll come right here.
She can use the mayor's microphone.
Hold on, just one second.
Might be easier to turn. Might be easier to turn. He's around right there. Why don't you do that one?
Yeah. Should've got the attorney speaker.
I got it.
Mrs. Woody, if you would, just give us your name and your address, please.
Willadine Woody, and I live at 113 North 16th Street in East Gaston.
Okay.
And the name is Jessica Lee Boswell Harges. I noticed that mistake yesterday. I've gotten the grass cut and I'm trying to find somebody to tear down the house. As I say, I got the letter yesterday.
Okay. Okay, are you asking for some additional time?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. If you don't find anybody, get anybody to tear the house down, the city can, we can abate it, tear it down, and then you pay a monthly payment of $100 a month till it's paid out.
How much is it?
That's a good question.
It all depends. I don't know how much it goes by the weight when they tear the house down.
Weight of the material.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I wait till the 30 days is up, is what you're saying?
Are you asking us to give you 30 days?
I'm asking you to table it. Give me some more time. I think it's a date on the letter. I have it. I don't remember.
No...
Do you need 30 days?
At least.
At least 30 days?
Yes.
Okay. And if you, that's the option I'm saying. If you can't find somebody to tear it down, then the city will abate it, tear it down, and charge you by the lien. It'll still be your property, but you just pay the amount for the tearing down.
Tearing down, okay. I'll consider that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Woody.
I guess he has to come to us.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to be passed to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Ms. Woody, based on this information right here, looking at this, I know that I said I would 30 days, but I'm gonna give you 14 days to find somebody to abate this.
Well, I was just talking to my daughter. It might be best that you do it that way. I won't have $100 right?
Okay, all right.
If you see to do it.
Okay.
With $100 a month.
I don't know how much it would, I don't know how much it would cost as far as the, how much it would cost for the structure.
Like I said, it's based on the weight. Normally, it's no more than 100, it could be less than 100 a month. It won't be more.
Okay.
So a three-year period.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, is there any additional discussion?
No.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1120 and 1122 Springfield Avenue in District 1, the state of Alabama, and Rita McCants being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to these resolutions? And these are items 10 and 11 on the agenda. Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started both these cases in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits on either to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Do the truck go to? I move to abate.
Second.
Both. I was...
Second.
So a motion and second to abate both properties. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Item number 12 is a public hearing. It's a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1400 Springfield Avenue in District 1, the state of Alabama, and heirs of Emma Frazier being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a vacant commercial building. We started our process in August of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1218, 1220, and 1222 Alabama Avenue in District 3, the estate of James Buford Pear, heirs being Lionel Pear and Carolyn Pear Mills being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions?
I'm James Pear, and I really appreciate y'all, what y'all doing around the city. It's a tough job, I know, with the client population and everything, but my father left me 20 pieces of property and I'm down to five in five years. So I think I've done a good job on that. But as far as I get right to the point, I've had a lot of health problems and stuff here lately, but the abating the nuisance, y'all tearing down the house and me making monthly payments, the 1220 and 1222, it's such a blessing. I mean, me finding somebody out there, ain't been working. So I'm for y'all tearing down. I gladly pay the monthly payment, and then with y'all's permission, I'll get the redrawing of the land lines there, and I can include the cottage that my father built, and then that'll be another tax bid. And I actually sold another house to a young couple. They really located in Boaz, so there's some more taxpayers, and they're going to nursing school, so, you know, I'm proud of them. My house looks a million dollars better. But I appreciate y'all's time and thank you very much.
Sir, could you give your address for the record?
1216 Alabama Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have one question for you right quick.
Okay, so...
Can you say it, 1220 and 22? What about 1218?
Well, 1218, I got a building permit for, and when I tear it, when they all tear down 1220 and 1222, then I'm gonna include that because I've already got people moving in from a house I sold across the street, her kids and grandkids. So they'll have a place to play and a parking access to 1218 because it doesn't have one since my father built that cottage back there and tied it up to the garage where it's on both lots. And that wasn't on my, but God bless him. But, so, you know, as soon as the buildings get tore down and, you know, I can fix it. 1218 is a good house. I mean, that's where my mother, my mother stayed, the Oshamers took her, but it was a, you know, it's been sitting empty salon because, like I said, I didn't have any parking and with no way to access.
So he wanted to turn it down too?
No, he don't want 18 torn. You don't want 18 torn down.
No, no. No.
Okay. You can't wait, what I'm telling you, you can't wait until we tear these other two down because we don't know when we're gonna get to them.
Oh.
You know, we have so many, so you don't have to start working on...
1218.
You don't start working on it now.
Yeah, I've gotta get all my stuff out of there and all that and everything, and it's basically, then you just have to let me know what all it needs. I mean, it's, like I said, it's a sound house. Yeah, I'll talk to him about it. I'll get it cleaned out and... Can I turn the power on or anything, stuff like that?
Let me talk to the council.
Okay.
We'll talk about that after the meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to any of these three resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I did have a conversation with Mr. Pear prior to the meeting, and I certainly do not object to tabling 1218 Alabama Avenue for 30 days. The other two, 1220 and 1222, I would like for a resolution to be passed on those so we can go ahead and get the utilities retired and get puppet works on notice for demolition. And like Councilman Worthy said, it's, they're at least a couple of months behind, so I'll be able to report back to you in 30 days. Hopefully, the situation 1218 will be abated, and I can report that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three ordinances before, I'm sorry, three resolutions before us. What is the pleasure of the council?
Okay, I wanna ask for a 30-day table for 1218 Alabama Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and second for just 1218 to abate.
Table?
Oh, the table, all right, for a 30-day table. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table item number 13 for 30 days, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
What is the pleasure of the council as it relates to items number 14 and 15, 1220 and 1222?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt items 14 and 15, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
As it relates to item number 16, this item has been removed from today's agenda due to an error in the notices. Correction will be published in mail, and the public hearing will be rescheduled for...
May 24th.
May 24th.
Is it the 24th instead of the 31st? Okay. So it'll be rescheduled for May 24. It's a resolution authorizing a special use permit to T-Mobile for new cell tower at 104 12th Street North in East Gaston. I know we've, I know we've got a number of, a number of citizens here, but again, this is, this is not an agenda item today. It's actually gonna be rescheduled, and the public hearing will be rescheduled and open for pub, for public comment at that time. Okay? So one thing that I will note as it relates to this is that we, why don't I just say me personally? I'm not a big fan of cell towers being in close proximity to residential areas. I never have been, because of some of the concerns, but there are, but there are issues that tie our hands. We have an ordinance, probably one of the strictest ordinances in the state, and we have an ordinance that, that may allow for the placement of cell towers on occasion in residential areas. So we're pursuing legal options, and our legal counsel is keeping us up to speed on where we are as it relates to this. But as it stands right now, you know, we have opinion that relates to this, and then of course, there's the practical element of the ordinance that we have to account for. So again, this hearing has been rescheduled, and this item will be back on the agenda on May 24. Okay? Is there any questions amongst the council members? Okay. Okay. Now there, yeah, all right. There are some people here from that community that, that wanna speak, but again, this is not an agenda item today. It is an agenda item on the 24th, and they'll have that opportunity to speak on the 24th.
You could, I respect that.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. The council doesn't...
Come on.
I don't believe it would be an official record for the hearing.
Yeah, it's...
I mean, they just be wasting their time. We need to...
Well, if they wanna talk, let them talk. I don't have a problem with them talking.
The point we wanna, wanna make is it's, it's not gonna be official record at this point. Want to encourage you to, do want to encourage you to come back again when it is on the agenda, and it will be a part of the official record.
Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity, y'all giving us now to express some concerns. What we really are asking is that our council support us in this action when it comes up. Let me just read a couple of things here that I have. In the, now I'll be brief. My name is Earl Hurd, and I alone with other landowners and property owners and business owners in the community in that area and residents. In the area, we have elementary school, a community college, a daycare, and various business owners, and many other residents living in that area. With our need to, or should I say, with our increasing need to stay connected, many are forgetting about the possible dangers of cell phone towers. There have been several reports of people who have suffered a variety of conditions as a result of living near towers, just a few. And I know Ms. Woods would be definitely concerned or know about some of these, one of these at least, since she being in education for the number of years that she was. Anormal cell growth promotion, DNA damage, reduced immune system competency, sleepiness, irritability, anxiety, depression, attention span deficit, and general memory loss. Now, they would tell you, the proponents would tell you, that evidence is inconclusive at best, but they would not tell you that there is no radiation exposure. What we're saying is we do not want this 80-foot tower in our neighborhood even with the minute amount of radiation. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And I'll, you know, not to be the dead horse, because again, we've got this item to address on next week, but we, during the pre-council work session on last week, we talked about with the consultant, the emotional concerns that will be raised by, by the community that was raised on last week. It was made very clear that there's already a perception that in this particular community, the East Gaston community is already a landfill, hazardous waste, there was a proposed hazardous rate, or no, there actually is one hazardous waste business operating in the area, in that community. There was also the Alagasco fiasco that was, that's not, not, not in our too distant future or past, that we, that that community had to deal with as well. So there are just a number of concerns, and the concern that I continue to get from citizens in that area is why in our community and not in some of the other communities in the city? So, so again, it's something that we're talking through with our legal department. They understand, but I'm just really concerned that our ordinance and, and the, and the law that dictates this kind of licensing may back us into a corner. So, so again, it's something that we're gonna continue to research, and the concerns of the citizens are not falling on deaf ears. We definitely hear you, and to a large degree, we support you. Is there any other comments, questions? Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing an easement to Alabama Power Company. This is to allow utility installation for the new community center for the Boys and Girls Club located at 2210 West Meakin Boulevard. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business? Okay, department reports, committees. Do want to take the opportunity to recognize a new interim department head, Captain Jaggers? Raise your hand, Captain Jaggers? All right. So he'll, he'll be sitting up there for a while, so we're glad to have... So he'll be sitting up there for a while, so we're glad to have him and wish him the best as he leads the department.
Chief.
Remarks by the mayor and council? Councilwoman Toads?
No.
Councilman Evers? Councilman Worthy?
Yes. I just want to go back and let's talk about the land when we abate the nuisance. We don't want the property. I say this all the time. You could take the property, we could knock it down, and you can make payments, which was told the lady there. But we're also starting a land bank, and if the mayor was here, this would be the time I would ask him where we are on the appointments. But he's not here, so we can get rid of this land. And what we want to do is get, give it away, you know, sell it very, very cheap, because we own too much land, and we don't want it. And most people think that we out here, we just want to knock somebody's house down and take their land, but that's not the case. If you could see these pictures that we see, and it devalues the other people's property in the neighborhood. And I've asked if it was a way we could put it on, up, the pictures that we see up here on the podium, that, so you all could see it, and so you'll know that we just not knocking people's houses down to be knocking them down. But anyway, so much for that. And also, I just want to say, we had a whole lot of stuff going on in the city over the weekend. We had the Tams after First Friday, and that was a great, I mean, they put on a show. And then the Task for Jazz was Sunday. But a lot of people are not getting the information, so I wish it was a way we could advertise better, if we had a radio station that we talked about to put it on so everybody would get this information. There's a lot of stuff going on in the city, and I see you got your hands like that, but anyway, I'm not even gonna address that. We're gonna leave that one alone. Thank you, that's all.
Councilman Billings?
And I also like to commend the Police Department. Friday afternoon, I went to East Gaston, and buddy, they had a traffic jam over there. But we had some policemen out there directing traffic, so I want to commend them for that. And that's all.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
Not a thing.
Okay. If there, did want to make mention of the young people upstairs, we actually were privy to a presentation by a group of Gaston City High School students upstairs, and these young people were proposing that the city support a Gaston Citizenship Award program. And these young people put a lot of time and effort into this proposal, and they're all seniors. This will make the second year in a row we've actually had seniors. It's the second year in a row we've actually had a group of Gaston City High School seniors to come to us and propose a legacy item, if you will. If you remember on last year, we had the young people propose the Titan Parkway painting and naming of the street, and this year, these young people are proposing the citizenship program, so we're excited about that. We got a verbal commitment from the council and the mayor's office to support that activity and award, and allow for an annual award for citizenship, so we're really excited about where that's gonna lead us in recognizing people for citizenship. Okay? One more announcement before we adjourn. There will be no work session or council meeting next Tuesday, May 17, due to the Alabama League of Municipalities Conference in Huntsville. Okay? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved. Second. Third.